Good evening and welcome to the Defiance City Council meeting for tonight, June 1st, 2021. As always, before council meeting is called to order, we have a local pastor come and open this up in prayer. Tonight, we have Pastor Tim Hacker from Bethel. Thanks for visiting us this evening.
Thank you for allowing me to pray. This will be the first time I've ever prayed at city council when I own two houses in town. But shortly, I'll only own one again. I'm looking forward to that. I feel like twice as invested tonight. You know, I was reading something recently, and it dawned on me that maybe a lot of people don't know this, but the word ecclesia in the Bible talks about a group of people who get together to take care of the needs of the community, and they work with the people of the community, and they gather in an assembly in order to make those decisions, you know, what's important for the community. That word ecclesia is also translated for most of us church. So I don't know whether you guys realize it or not, but you're the ecclesia here in Defiance, and you're doing the Lord's work here. So I think it's good that we just pray that God helps you all that He can, and I'm sure you'll take it. So let's pray. Father, thank you for these wonderful people, for their efforts to make Defiance what it is, and it is a great place to live, Lord, and we are thankful for that. We pray that you'll give them wisdom when they come to something that they can't agree on, that there'll be an answer come out of nowhere sometimes and just surprise everyone, and that you will just show yourself mighty through them for the people of this community so that all of us, Lord, can just serve and love and be all the things that we should be. So we thank you for it, in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, I'll turn it back over to Pastor McMaster and Pastor McCanns. I've got to go paint.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let the record show that all the members of council are present this evening. Would you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its liberty and justice for all.
I've reviewed the index minutes for our last city council meeting of May 25th, 2021. Do we have a motion to correct or amend the index minutes as they're presented? Without any, I will approve them. And we haven't, do we have a request or report for liaison meeting?
I think this would be you, Jeff. I was going to do that during.
Okay. Do we have any comments from council? Mr. Corbett?
Mayor Jeff, I had a call from a constituent today that just asked this question, and I didn't know the answer, so I'm going to ask. She was concerned since the splash pad is so close to Power Dam Road about the safety of the kids. Is there any fencing? Go ahead, Mayor.
Yes, the actually, the Keller Organization through its fundraising activity with a certain tractor, I don't really quite know how it works, Mr. Corbett, has raised the money to install a four-foot aluminum, nice decorative fence, starting over at the entrance off of the parking lot, starting at that entrance where the, there's also a box for the library towards the street, and then it will run between the sidewalk and the splash pad. There's a narrow area. It'll run parallel to Power Dam Road and then cut back towards the left field, or excuse me, the right field fence that's there for the ball field currently. And quite honestly, I thought that'd be done by now, but it should be just about any time.
Very good.
Mr. Mast?
Just a quick question regarding the CSX project at Atlantic. Has there been any communication from them on that as far as when?
Well, you know, Melinda sent that email out late last week, but it's CSX, and CSX and communication really aren't synonymous with one another. So they'll send an email out here right directly, I'm sure, giving us very little notice. And when it does, you'll know, and we will send out a nixle, and Mr. Alberg will put it on his website and in his newspaper. Sorry, but that's dealing with CSX.
Mr. Rusty?
Jeff, with the weather changing, I had somebody ask me in regards to cats.
Cats?
Cats. In other words, cats wandering into the yard. What is the protocol on how to alleviate cats coming into the yards that from neighbors or from the neighborhood?
You can file a complaint with my office. We'll follow up with it. Cats that are in other people's yards, I mean, we had a big discussion about cats some time ago, and if you have other cats doing their business in other people's yards, that's a problem. As a matter of fact, you can even go to the extent that you can leash cats, you can do a number of things. Anybody that feeds a cat, okay, whether you own that cat, whatever, you're taking, you control that cat when you start to feed that cat. So many people will just feed cats at their own whim, and then what happens is these cats start coming around. If you have that issue, and if she has that issue, she should contact my office, and we'll follow up with it.
I do believe, Mr. Rusty, and I would fact-check me on this, but that you can go to the animal shelter, get traps, trap those cats, and then take them to the animal shelter. And then they don't euthanize them, they, I believe they spay or neuter if that's appropriate, and then they're released again. That's the current protocol, but that's what I think. It's not what I know.
Are we still contributing to the shelter for the animal shelter or cats?
We actually had a request that is under consideration, not necessarily for cats, but for the humane shelter.
A couple of years ago, we had, I believe, $5,000 additional funds in the budget. That was a one-time request and a one-time donation to help with their feline program. We have not funded that since or nor been asked to do so.
Well, the problem with that is that it's our responsibility, because in essence, we have an ordinance, and our ordinance here in Defiance basically says that we take care of the cat issue, and there should be someplace that that cat should go if it is picked up. And that's why I think we, I think it was a request that was made to contribute to the feline issue at the shelter because they weren't getting any. I think probably maybe six years ago, there was a request to council for some matching with the county, and that was rejected by city council. And then I think within the last four years or three years, we did do the 5,000 contribution. And I think it should be one of those things where it's continuing as long as that ordinance is on the books that, you know, we're alleviating a cat issues in our community, they have to go someplace. Where would they go? That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, no, you're asking the wrong guy if you're looking at me.
We'll pull the ordinance, take a look at it, revisit it, and if you can forward me the person, I'd be more than happy to get back with them.
Mr. Engel?
Yeah, yeah, a couple of things. If that's reported to you or the mayor as far as all the cats, what will be done with that? I mean, what, what can we do with that? Because I know people that's got beach cats and do that, and they're just all over, just not my neighborhood, but other places. Well, I don't.
I think our code addresses that you're not allowed to feed stray cats. I don't think our code addresses feral cats and what we're supposed to do with them. Again, like the mayor, I don't know, but I don't think we have anything on the books other than you're not supposed to feed them.
Feral cats, you can't establish ownership, obviously. So I think you're correct, Mr. Leonard. As I said, I, I think the best thing we can do for all of you is we'll follow up with Mr. O'Donnell on what our code says. I'm happy to call Lisa Weiner and check with her, but the, the dog warden, Mr. Vogel, is exactly that, a dog warden. I don't believe he deals with cats. And feral cats are just like, in some regards, raccoons and squirrels and rabbits. I know they're a pain. I do think recently, we did charge someone for feeding a cat. It went to court, and that person was found guilty for that, and I assume fined, but I don't know that for certain.
We can follow up with that and give you some information.
And one other thing, if I'm not mistaken, Jackie Moss, Steve Moss's wife, I think she has taken cats in like that.
She won't take them in anymore. People have been taking them out there. She won't take them in anymore.
No, one time she did, a couple of years ago, yeah, she was doing it.
I'm not so sure the shelter would really accept somebody. You'd have to check on that to be sure, but I didn't know. The other problem is that when you spay or neuter, there's a good deal of cost involved, and there's no one to help with that. So it'd be nice if we could see some sort of public-private get-together to provide some sort of funding, get these cats at least, they neutered and then like.
Be happy to call Mrs. Weiner. I'll try to do that tomorrow.
Thanks.
Are there any other comments from council? I have only one thing on my desk, and that's a notice of liquor license transferred from Jimmy &amp; Son, Inc., doing business as Defiance Beverage Center, 1100 North Clinton of Defiance, to 1100 North Clinton LLC, doing business as Defiance Beverage Center at 1100 North Clinton in Defiance. Does anyone want a public hearing on the issue? Nope? All right. And with that, we'll move on to the Board of Control. Mayor McCann?
Thank you, President Mast. I wanted to circle back with you guys on the tree. I believe you brought up Mr. Waxler last week between Meyer and Williams Street, and I mentioned that I thought that alley was not a public alley, and it is not. In fact, it was never even platted as an alley. How it became an alley, I don't know, but that tree is not our responsibility directly, but I will have Mr. Robeson deal with it from a nuisance standpoint. Okay? And beyond that, I just want to thank everybody that attended the Memorial Day service yesterday. There was a lot of people there, as many as I have seen at that event. A great surprise, but wanted also thank our cemetery workers, the Parks Department, the Streets Departments, the nuisance people that all had Riverside Cemetery shining bright, and I really appreciate that. Our assistant Debbie Stevens, who coordinates the whole thing, that starts in February when we start to reach out to all the different individuals that are involved, and Debbie pulls those meetings together, and we were able to pull that off. Mark, John, and Jamie from DCTV for seeing to it that it was broadcast on DCTV, and the Defiance Band hammered out all their scheduled songs with the one exception of I forgot to have them play one. Commissioner Mack did a great job with his talk, and Pastor Brobston and the other speakers. If you were there, you had the great pleasure of hearing Sofia Castillo sing the National Anthem a cappella, and she did an amazing job. So just thanks for everybody. It's one of the things I look forward to every year, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a few things. Number one, tomorrow, there's going to be out at Pinehurst and State Route 281, there's going to be some test digs for A&R Pipeline. They may have to shut Pinehurst down. They're not quite sure yet, but just to give you a heads up on that, they will be doing some work out there. The other thing that I would like to announce is I would like to have a traffic commission meeting on June 22nd at 5:00. And the agenda items will be, number one, a second access for 115 BD Avenue. No right turn on reds and restricted areas. I think I might have mentioned to council that we were having some issues concerning right turns in the downtown area, and I think what we want to do is, what I'd like to do at that point in time is just to bring it to Traffic Commission to have that discussion and put it out there and make sure that it's properly advertised for the public and their participation in it. And then the final issue will be, for the agenda, will be handicap parking in the vicinity of 1,005 Davidson Street. So those three agenda items will be on Traffic Commission, and that time again is time and place will be June 22nd at 5:00. Final thing that I would like to request from council is a quick executive session on matters of the collective bargaining agreement for both police and fire. I think that there's some things that I would certainly like to discuss with council. It could be changes, and before we do that, I would like to bring them to your attention. So it shouldn't take long.
We have a request for an executive session. Do we have a motion for such?
Some motion.
Motion? Second, Mr. Mast?
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Corbett?
Yes.
Mr. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Rusty?
Yes.
Mr. Mast?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
And Mrs. Grouch?
Yes.
Right. An executive session before we adjourn for this evening. And is there anything else?
Just one final matter. Mr. Waxler, we talked about the signs.
I've seen them.
Yeah, they're up.
Thanks. I've seen them the way out there.
Yeah. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. O'Donnell is serving our country this evening, and so, Mr. Leonard?
Because I'm not serving our country this evening.
You're serving the city currently, I suppose.
Serving our community.
Just a reminder that next Tuesday, we will have a finance and budget liaison meeting during regular session to discuss quarterly financial update, a brief discussion on fees in general, and then a specific discussion on cemetery rates.
Excellent. And next Tuesday is June 8th, so right there at 7:00. With that, we have three items for discussion this evening. Captioning, the first one is elders.
First reading by caption only. At ordinance awarding professional service contract for the design of Commerce Drive extension and declaring emergency.
Mayor McCann?
Thank you, President McMaster. I think this is something you've all expected to see here sometime. As you all know, that currently there's $750,000 in grant money that's been awarded to the city of Defiance for the improvement of East Commerce Drive. We're requesting is the, to cover the engineering cost of $195,800 to improve East Commerce from Carpenter Road to and across the Napoleon Defiance and Western Railroad, sometimes commonly known as the Pioneer or Short Line Railroad. Pioneer has indicated that they are willing to help with the actual at-grade crossing, and we still have to go to Common Pleas Court and get permission for that at-grade crossing. There'll be a couple of options that we'll review. I think our preference is that the curb, the street have curbs and gutters, but we will also look at open drainage leading to drainage ditch along the side of the road. Also be proposal for a sewage pump station, and I think it's probably worth noting that as you're heading west on East Commerce at Carpenter, there would be a left turn lane, and also as you are coming across US 24, heading south on Carpenter Road, there would be a left turn lane there as well, albeit a very small lane because of the coming across that bridge. One of the real benefits to this, we don't often talk about, is the completion of this road will give us much better access to the 44-acre option property, what we refer to it as, that the CIC currently holds an option with George Masterson that is on the same side of the tracks, is what we're talking about. That's what I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Rusty?
This is just the engineering costs for the project.
That's correct.
And the actual project cost is for the road?
We don't know. We'll know after this engineering is done. They'll provide us with an engineer's estimate, $2.5 to $3.5 million.
And that money will come from where?
Various sources, $750,000 in grants, with another $125,000 pending because there's a project scheduled to be done in this corridor as well. And, Mr. Leonard, I'll let you answer the rest of the questions as far as where the money will, you're the money man.
I hope that estimate is high. I was going to say more like a million and a half, but I'm sure that's too low, too.
Okay.
Say a couple of million dollars. But yeah, there's $750,000 that's been committed in grants, primarily the result of the expansion that was done at Manville. That money is still available to us for when this project moves forward. There could be additional money, as the mayor said, resulting from some additional new jobs, including what we've talked about recently across the street from Manville. Then the water portion, the water line portion of the road, the sewer line portion of the road, those could be paid from the water and sewer funds. And then part of the discussion on what we do with the new federal funding that is coming our way, I mean, that'll be a part of the discussion we have with you folks, but those numbers will all be firmed up as a result of this engineering work.
It's interesting, and I guess I, and I've known this because I've been on council for a while, is that we do engineering costs first, get the, in this case, it's $195,800 that we put out to basically get the study, and then we come back and we're either going to approve or not approve the project. And if the project is whatever, you know, we turn it down, then we're out the $195,800. Eight hundred. I mean, that's, that's, it's interesting how that's done, but.
I'd like to correct you in just a little something you just said. Sooner or later, this road's going to have to be completed, and these engineering plans, whether the project is done in '22, '23, '24, the engineering plans themselves, for the most part, should still be good. There might be some tweaking, but the majority of the plan itself to build the road, where the road goes, how it crosses the Short Line Railroad so that we have basically a perpendicular crossing, those are, the railroad's not going to move, and, and nothing should happen that's going to change these plans.
But as far as with the railroad entrance, or that, that's part of the project that's ongoing right now, that's connecting from Dahmer'sville to that railroad crossing, correct?
The road went 600 feet in. There's probably at least that, if not more, yet to complete, but that's not our responsibility.
Okay.
When are they going to start that building out there?
Anytime.
I mean, I see a lot of stuff happening, but nothing there.
There was, there was some issues with the plan inspector, plan examiner out of Columbus, but those were cleared up last week.
Mr. Rusty?
After how long is the $750,000 available to the city?
Well, technically now, it's available to December 31 of 2021, which seems like a short timeframe. We've been granted multiple extensions. That's been like a six-month grant of, you know, it's been available in six months increments. I think we're on our second or third extension at this point. As long as we have things progressing in that area, ODOT has been seemingly amenable to extend everything up until we'll need it.
I got one last question.
It's a moving, it's a moving deadline, and fortunately, they've kept moving it for us.
If, if the federal money that we're going to get in, if that wasn't available to us, and there was no other source to build the road other than the property just being there, but we still had the $750,000 available, if a business wanted to build in that area, would they be responsible for that piece of the road and potentially anything that they could take from the $750? There's money that's available for roads improvements in front of businesses.
I guess conceivably, Joe. We've, we've debated for two years since this whole Harmon deal came along as to how much, you know, at what point should the city kick in the balance of this road project when we've got $750,000 in grants? And if all we had was the $750 against the $2.5 million project, and there were no, no prospects of additional new growth out there, I don't think we would fund it until something more promising came along, and we would probably sacrifice the $750,000 in grants. And we're doing everything we can to extend that offer and to have it still available. We've got development happening out there. We have a promised new development happening out there, and then you've got to decide, well, how much more money can we get to fund it? And at what point, you know, say it's $2.5 million, and we secure a million or a million two, then you've got to really decide, well, you know what, we'd probably be foolish to turn that kind of money away and not come up with the million-dollar balance to finish it, whatever those numbers are. And, you know, if need be, worst-case scenario, if you need a million dollars for a road that's got to be done, and you don't have another source of funding, you borrow a million dollars for five years. I mean, we and the council, we've got to decide whether doing that road and having the development that we've all hoped for along the 24 corridor for 15 years is worth funding when we're on the precipice of it happening.
I think the other issue, or the other point is, you know, you say you're right about the engineering, but you also have to add the planning component into that. We've been planning to look at Commerce Drive, and Jerry Hayes, when Jerry was here, talked about Commerce Drive for a number of years. We brought the Harmon folks in to this council room to discuss the planning and the, and the development of that area. We've, once, once the construct, once the engineering is done, then I think the numbers become a little bit more clear, but we're also waiting for opportunities where job creation creates grants, and I think we've done that with some of the programs that we already have. So $750s in the bank already, additional monies can come in into play as long as you have that job creation, and I think John said it best. When you have the opportunity to, you know, maybe get all of it, you might get a portion of it, and not all of it is going to be on the, when you think about it, the question really is, is how much should the government participate in? The government still has, it's still a public purpose. It can, it can, you have access for Manville. You can get trucks off Carpenter Road. You can access Manville better. There are other attributes of the program that kind of fit it. How much of that, I think that obviously we, you know, that's up for debate, but I think we've secured quite a bit of money, and I think that based on some of the development and discussions we had, certainly with the Harmon Group, I think we're confident that that can be pushed forward, and you'll see development there.
Should we discuss the TIF, Mr. Leonard?
Well, there's not, I mean.
Part of that area is TIF.
Know about the TIF.
Part of that area is TIF. So all these infrastructure costs, this engineering cost, and the cost to build the roadway, and all the other things, over a period of time as that area develops.
Correct, Mayor.
The TIF, the tax increment financing, can go back to pay this off.
We've talked a lot over, we focused on the $2 million that went into the property purchase on the Harmon half of the whole Commerce Road, Commerce Drive area. The mayor's correct, that whole area, that whole corridor from Carpenter to Dahmer'sville is a part of the TIF area, and we would be able to reimburse ourselves for all of those costs. And we would be able to reimburse ourselves for all of those costs that we have in it. The direct question to your answer is absolutely. If a company comes in and wants to build on the deeper end, but this side of the tracks, yeah, you could make the company build the road like you would make any private, like you could make any private developer. But at the same time, you're trying to incentivize a company to come and, you know, the whole economic development world, you know, what are you gonna give away? What are you gonna charge? It becomes a part of the whole negotiation, I think. And I don't think you can answer the question today whether we would make a company pay for their portion of the road or not.
Mr. Rusty.
So we have basically, what, two buildings that are going in already on the extended road to Dahmersville? Or one?
Currently, there's one building scheduled for East Commerce between Carpenter and the railroad tracks. And one building scheduled, you see the building sitting there, that the Harmon group is putting up at Dahmersville and East Commerce.
Okay, and there's plenty of space for more buildings in that area.
Oh, yes, sir.
So it's not really a priority for us at this point to say, if we don't build this, then if businesses want to come to Defiance, that they're out because there is no more growth in that area. There is growth already in place with the developer out of Toledo that's basically Harmon. It's basically already developing the property, and you could do add-ons to there. And for us to basically say, we wanna take 2 million or whatever the amount is that we could use elsewhere and build something, I don't think that was ever, I think, like we said, that property has never been developed because in essence, we didn't want, we didn't have the money to put in there. There were other priorities in our community. We do have this money, you know, in my opinion. I think we need to discuss where we could, where the best fit would be with that money. And we haven't had that discussion. If we go ahead and do this 195, 800, then we're semi-committed. And I don't see that, I don't see that being the, the, what we should, the purpose of what we should be doing right now. I think if nothing else, what we should do is table this, have our discussion on what are some of the projects that could be utilized with the monies that we get from the federal government. And if this becomes the number one project that in lieu of all the other ones, yeah, we can come back to that point. But I don't see us at this point going forward with something without at least finding out what else is available if we're gonna be using that money. My thoughts.
Mrs. Crutch.
With the $750,000 grant, is there stipulations of what that money is used for?
Is for the road.
It is just for the road.
Just for the road.
Just for the road. So the 195,000, that doesn't come out of the grant money?
It would not.
It would not. So where does the 195, 800 come from?
Well, it's gonna come out of the capital improvements fund.
Okay.
I mean, it would come from the income tax that funded the capital improvements fund. It might eat into something we do in 2022 or would recommend to do in 2022. We have, as you are all well aware, CARES Act funding, what was CARES Act funding, it is now surplus in our general fund, available, you know, to the tune of over a million dollars. We're slated to get close to another $3 million in federal funding. And, you know, it's always a question, you know, what is the, what's the proper time to, for all of us to have these discussions? And Mr. Uresti's, his point is well taken, and maybe we should have that conversation much sooner than we expected. I can tell you that the administration's recommendation is going to be that Commerce Drive is the number one priority. Because of the grant funding that is attached, that is at risk of being lost. Because if you consider all of this federal money that's falling out of the sky, if, if you consider how can we best maximize the return on that money? How can we best use that money so we get a long-term benefit from it? You have to look at economic development opportunities, which Commerce Drive represents. You know, we could take $2 million and pave sidewalks and pave streets. But that's, those are operating obligations of the city. That, that once, that once we spend that money, it's gone. It's not as though it's going to sustain street paving for the next 50 years. Whereas an economic development investment with new jobs and that kind of growth could actually sustain operating expenses for decades or years to come. So I think we wanna look from the perspective of what's the best way to maximize the long-term benefit that this windfall of money could provide? As opposed to just spending it on, on a list of potholes that we should be trying to fund without that windfall anyway. You know what I mean? So it's a one-time windfall of funds, and we're trying to think of how we can best maximize it for the long term. Economic development seems to be, from the administration's standpoint, possibly the best use of funds. But we can't finish that conversation, obviously, without the council. And Mr. Uresti is making a question, is raising a question about the timing that is, I think, probably very appropriate. And when do we have this discussion with you all? The truth is, we don't know exactly how much money we're gonna get. We don't know exactly when we're gonna get it. And we don't know exactly what those uses are going to be. Because even though some guidance came out, there's enough vagueness in the, in the, and it's all open to interpretation. And it will be continually interpreted and modified for the next six months, maybe the next 12 months, before a final answer is given on all the possible uses of the funding. The one thing that we did with the CARES Act funding, which gave us the absolute maximum flexibility, was when we discovered we could use that funding to pay for first responders' regular wages, we did that. And so the CARES Act money is gone. But it freed up, dollar for dollar, that money in the general fund. So we have that money basically at our disposal for whatever purposes this group wants to use it for. We're no longer restricted by the CARES Act restrictions. I don't know that we'll achieve that same level of flexibility with the new federal money. That's a question that remains.
Mr. Waxler.
I understand what you're saying, John. I agree with Samba, but, you know, like you said, we don't need to, once you put it down the street, it's gone. Well, you know, you got to maintain what you have for your people to come to your town. They won't drive one of the streets full of holes and, and bad roads. So I guess my point is, is what you said don't make sense to me.
Well, it's all about, so many things we talk about are the chicken and the egg. Is a company gonna come because we have beautifully paved streets? Or are we gonna get beautifully paved streets because we've added 500 jobs to our local economy? Which comes first?
Well, there's people that come here when they can't have streets dragged on. You know, I, I don't know. I, I just, you know, we, we got some that are really bad. We've been, you know, Derbyshire is a good one.
Derbyshire.
No company that's contemplating coming to town could care less about Derbyshire.
Well, we gotta worry about people that live here.
But no company that's contemplating coming here is ever even gonna know Derbyshire Road exists.
I know, but our taxpayers do.
I know.
And we don't.
And I don't mean to diminish that, but it's hard to compare the two uses.
Derbyshire, the residents of the Derbyshire neighborhood received a letter from me.
I understand that.
That you received a copy of.
I understand all that.
That explained exactly what we're gonna be doing over the next couple of years back in that subdivision. Now, if you wanna bring up another street like Carpenter Road, fine, that's scheduled to be paved this year. If you wanna bring up another street like West High, that's fine. That's scheduled for water line replacement, repaving next year. Mr. Waxler, I current, I frequently take people on tours of our community. Outsiders coming to our community. I take them down for, for serious reasons. I take them down Carpenter Road. I take them down West High. I take them down some of our streets downtown. And while I'm doing that, I will apologize for the condition of some of our streets. But I intentionally take them down some of our poorest streets. I've taken them back in the Derbyshire area and apologized. And they say, oh, don't worry about it, sir. These are much better than the streets in our town. Now, I really don't care about the streets in other towns. But what I'm trying to do is solicit some feedback from these people. Just.
All right. I totally understand that. I'm just saying that there's a lot of roads that people pay for that we don't maintain. And I know Derbyshire's been a bad black eye for years for us, but we've still done nothing with it, so.
We, we have done something. We've communicated to them exactly what we will be doing in 2022 and 2023.
And in fairness, we tried the chip and seal. It didn't pan out. It didn't work out. But we did try it.
We, we explained it's much, if we could go in and pave the streets, we can do that. We can probably do it this year. But we're gonna dig them all right back up.
Yeah, we've been doing that for 10 years. 10 years, we've been telling them that. We're gonna do it. We've done it, so.
Did you have a question, Mr. Corbett?
I just want some clarification. I see that this ordinance has an emergency clause attached to it. So is there a guide or we're under the gun with the deadline? Or what's the reason for the emergency clause?
The last paragraph of the ordinance reads, "Grant funding for the city is contingent upon timely commencement of this project." So we, we've got to show ODOT that we're serious about this. And by, by doing the engineering work, that's our statement, saying we're serious about moving this along.
Okay. But the grant funding is available till December of this year yet?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Waxler.
Where was that? You said there was another 125 or besides the 750 or something, didn't you?
There's another economic development project proposed that we have discussed here that we have petitioned ODOT, Jobs and Commerce, for some additional help with this road. And $125,000 was thrown out as a possibility.
So the second building.
And that would go on top of the 750?
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Engel.
No other questions. Most suspended call.
Any other questions? We have a motion to suspend and call.
Second.
Second, Mr. Mast.
Mr. Corbett.
Yes.
Mr. Hancock.
Yes.
Mr. Rusty.
No.
Mr. Mast.
Yes.
Mr. Waxler.
No.
Mrs. Crutch.
No.
And Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Yep, it has to come back as a second reading because it's an emergency. It needs five council members, and we currently have one, two, three, four. So we'll bring it back for a second reading. Second.
First reading by caption only. Anorant authorization entry into a grant agreement with the Great Lakes Observing System and declaring emergency.
Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a way to enhance our, our water plant and in conjunction with our CSL program, one of the main items of discussion has been the, the environment and water quality. And I have to give my compliments to Jennifer English, who has been able to, number one, secure a program where we've gone out to the reservoir site and looked at filtering water out there and actually improve water quality with the farmland that we've actually donated. And we are actually monitoring the, the issue of filtering out nutrients from that water and collecting data on that. Most recently, and today, I'm happy to announce that another program is, we've got a closing done on the property that you see on 424 Burning Tree, where we've acquired property and been able to actually secure a grant for a wetland. Most recently, dealing with water quality issues in the water plant, we've been able to secure a grant for some $90,000 that will actually benefit the water plant in looking at real-time monitoring of sensor equipment where we can measure different attributes in the water, like nitrates, phosphorus, ammonia, and some of those kind of things that we're actually monitoring the water system and the draw that we take and put into the reservoir site. So we can measure exactly what is there and when we're putting it into our reservoir. And this has upside to us because in those days when we find that those attributes that we're measuring are high, then obviously, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be pumping into the reservoir site because of water quality issues. So I'm happy to announce, and I've asked Jennifer to come tonight to talk about the program. You have the contract agreement between the Great Lakes Observing System and the City of Defiance. I think that this fits well together with where we're going with technology, how we're gonna use technology to, to help ourselves and make better decisions on how we operate the plant, how we operate the reservoir. And what we have before you tonight is an agreement that we have with the Great Lakes Observing System. But it's a grant program that we've been able to secure and actually monitor water quality at the intake of our water plant. And with that, Jen, I'll hand it over to you. You can give some further details on it.
I'd be happy to answer questions. Jeff, you explained it very well. I mean, the, the really basic point of this is to have real-time monitoring. Right now, the water staff, Joe and Adam, Joe yours and Adam McDowell, they operate the, the plant by doing a manual measurement. And then they take that, take the information from that measurement, and they decide whether or not to pump river water into the reservoir. This will give us real-time data. It'll be a continuous. Adam's been, been saying this is something that they need for a very long time. So it'll give them continuous data. If the river water changes, they can turn the pump off. They can, in, in a perfect world, this will give them the ability to keep the reservoir fuller. They, they struggle to keep it full. Right now, when they turn the pump on, they just pump until they get enough water, and they don't know what the quality is. So real-time data monitoring, again, like Jeff said, it really, it complements the overall strategy that we're, that we're working towards. We've, I've been here before talking about source water protection. So this is really, it also fits into our watershed plan, our integrated watershed plan. $68,000 of it is for equipment. There's $15,000 for consulting fees with a company called Tetra Tech that we currently work with. Bruce Cleveland analyzes our data on a regular basis, the staff that go out and collect samples. So he's, he's been looking at our data and collecting, giving us insights into our data. But the, the real crux of this, and I think one of the reasons that we were awarded the grant is because we showed how the data is gonna help us make better decisions. It's not just collecting more data for the sake of it and putting it on a shelf. But it'll actually, it'll give the water plant staff some really good information that they can use on a daily basis, so.
And, and my compliments to Adam and Joe out at the water plant. They've done a lot of work, a lot of good, hard work on source water protection and protecting our source water. So I'd be remiss if I didn't mention them as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Mast.
This grant, in the contract, it's for a year.
Yes.
Now, does that set us up at that point with our own program that we can manage to, and continue on beyond that here?
Yeah, yeah. So the, the $68,000 worth of equipment, it may take a little bit of, very small amount of funding from the water plant to get the pump. They're gonna pump, I think, about 30 feet up to the plant. So all of this equipment will be located inside the water treatment plant, and it will be ours at the end of the agreement. So the Gloss, I guess it's not an agency, maybe it's an agency, I'm not sure, nonprofit company. They have a, a cloud platform that they're enhancing or they're redeveloping. It's called Seagull. So it's an online, so the database is currently, the database they currently use is outdated. So they're actually going through a process of updating that. So all of this data is gonna feed into their new cloud-based system. And we think that'll continue even after the year. But the year was just basically the, the pilot project, just an opportunity to get it, get us up and running and make sure we work through all the bugs, get, get the data collected, get it up to the cloud. And then they'll, they'll leave us with the equipment. We can continue, so. Which is the purpose of the emergency. We were hopeful that we would have been able to start this at the beginning of May. We were hopeful that we would have been able to start this at the beginning of May, so we're asking as an emergency to be able to, we're not asking for matching funding, this is just permission to enter into the contract so that we can go ahead and get started right away.
Mr. Ingle?
Yeah, well, this, you said it would, they could shut it off, will this shut off, does it have to be shut off manually if the water changes, or it's that automatically that senses that and it can shut off?
It's a good question for Adam and Joe. I think they have to do that manually. They have staff there 24 hours. So the data will be automated, but I think the man, I think the pump is a manual switch.
And along with that $90,000, how is that into our budget? I mean, I know that it's not within our budget currently, but will it be under MS4 or will it be under intake, waste? How will that be facilitated? And we'll be able to, we'll be able to monitor, is that correct, John?
It'd be in the water plant, it'd be in the water fund, the operating...
Like a subcategory of the water?
We'll have to appropriate the dollars, but then we'll get all the grant revenue to cover those expenses.
There's just a few thousand dollars for reimbursement of salaries, so there'll be a little bit of my time that's covered, just as kind of, I guess, the coordinator, project manager. It's not time for Adam and Joe. They were glad to, glad to do the extra work because it's, in the long run, it's data that will, will save them time and money.
But that's included in this 90, is that correct?
Yeah, so there's about $6,000 of revenue that we'll bring in for, for salaries.
Mr. Ingle?
Yeah, no other discussion, no, make a motion to suspend and call.
We have a, we have a motion, we have a motion to suspend and call. Second, Mr. Corbett?
Mr. Rusty?
Yes.
Mr. Mast?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mrs. Crutch?
Yes.
Mr. Ingle?
Yes.
Mr. Corbett?
Yes.
And Mr. Hancock?
Yes.
And we have a motion to adopt?
Motion is out.
Mr. Hancock, second.
Second.
Mr. Mast?
Mr. Mast?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mrs. Crutch?
Yes.
Mr. Ingle?
Yes.
Mr. Corbett?
Yes.
Mr. Hancock?
Yes.
And Mr. Rusty?
Yes.
And Council President, may I say one thing?
Thank you, Jen, this is very nice.
Yeah, thank you very much. We'll, we'll be back to give updates. We'll bring, we'll bring Adam and Joe back. Thank you.
And this ordinance is adopted. And lastly?
First reading by caption only. An ordinance authorized an administrative to apply for a natural, nature works grant from Ohio Department of Nature Resources and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes, thank you. So as council is well aware, we've made some incredibly nice improvements throughout our park system over the last number of years. I think almost all of them have included new playground equipment, and almost all of them have been assisted with grant funding of one form or another. And so our planner, Nikki Warnke, who applies for all of these grants, we've been talking internally about the playground equipment at Kingsbury Park, possibly as a 2022 project. The new playground equipment at Bronson has just been installed, and I'm sure some of you've been out to see it. So Nikki is just doing her due diligence. There are deadlines for applying for these grants, and even though it'd be a 2022 project, if it goes forward, she's requesting close to $50,000 towards the playground equipment, new playground equipment at Kingsbury Park. And if we get the grant funding, we would be talking about this as a project for the 2022 budget.
Excellent. Do we have any questions for Mr. Leonard? Mr. Rusty?
No questions, most suspended call.
We have no questions, or you have a motion to suspend and call?
Second.
Second, Mr. Corbett?
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mrs. Crutch?
Yes.
Mr. Ingle?
Yes.
Mr. Corbett?
Yes.
Mr. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Rusty?
Yes.
And Mr. Mast?
Yes.
And a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Mrs. Crutch, second. Mr. Waxler?
Mrs. Crutch?
Yes.
Mr. Ingle?
Yes.
Mr. Corbett?
Yes.
Mr. Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Rusty?
Yes.
Mr. Mast?
Yes.
And Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
All right. And this ordinance is adopted. With that?
Do you have a comment?
Sure.
I just want to compliment the city for the look of the playgrounds in the parks. They look great.
Thank you.
Taking a ride to any one of those, I mean, a number of years back, I never would have thought that look would improve, but it's like, I mean, it's fantastic what's the makeover that's taking place in those. And you see a lot of the kids on those units or whatever enjoying themselves, and that's great. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Before we exit to executive session, we don't have any guests this evening for citizens' concerns. Did any members of council have an email or a message? I did not. So we can stretch our legs for a couple of minutes before we enter executive session.